We don't often have an opportunity to see all the great things that our kids are doing to help and give back to others. So I just wanted to mention a few of those things tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Wolfmeyer. Anyone else with announcements? Ms. Ross.
I don't...can everyone hear me? Okay. I don't really have an announcement, but I've asked for a moment of silence for one of our students that lost his life, ex-student, pastor and Mrs. Hubbard's son, who passed away this morning, like, to ask for a moment of silence in respect for them. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any...any other members of the board with announcements? All right. We have the next item is the approval of the minutes. Could we have a motion for the approval of the minutes for the meeting for November twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen? Thank you. Is there any discussion? Any questions, comments, revisions? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
This is Mrs. Butler.
Aye.
This is Butler. Aye. This is Ross. Aye. Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. As we come to the time on our agenda that's set aside for public comment, I'd like to share some remarks from the Board of Education that reinforce the communication sent last week by Dr. Lathan to Charter Oak families and staff. The Board of Education has been made aware of and fully supports the internal investigation that led to the district's self-reporting of potential irregularities associated with the administration of the Illinois Standard Achievement Test, known as ISAT, to special education students at Charter Oak Primary School. The district is currently preparing its formal self-report for submission to the Illinois State Board of Education by the end of the month or shortly thereafter. We will then cooperate fully as the ISBE proceeds to consider these matters, which may include conducting its own investigation. District one fifty's decision to self-report was not made lightly. Should ISBE's investigation of this matter confirm improprieties in test administration on the part of a school employee or employees, it could have serious implications for all Peoria Public Schools, not just Charter Oak. In addition, there may be serious consequences for implicated staff members, which could include disciplinary action, dismissal, and/or termination of licensure or certification by the state of Illinois. Regardless of the consequences to the school district or its staff, the Board wants to commend the individuals who displayed admirable courage and forthrightness by voluntarily bringing their concerns about the integrity of the testing process to the administration's attention. The qualities they have demonstrated are something to which we should all aspire, and thanks to their efforts, our school district will be a better place for both our students and teachers. In the end, the Board of Education's overriding goal and responsibility is to ensure the district's testing process strictly complies with ISBE requirements, so that our children will receive the appropriate educational opportunities to which they are entitled. Now, to be clear, the investigation is centered on Charter Oak Primary School, where there appears to be approximately a five-year pattern of inconsistencies between ISAT test scores and academic achievement for Charter Oak special education students. As principal of Charter Oak during that entire time, Mr. Wetterhour was responsible for oversight and proper administration of the ISAT and other standardized tests in accordance with ISBE guidelines. Now, that's the responsibility of every principal in District one fifty, and each of them accepts that responsibility as part of their job description as the instructional leaders in their buildings. Accordingly, Mr. Wetterhour, along with all those involved in the administration of these tests, has been interdued as part of our investigation. As this investigation moves into its next phase, Mr. Wetterhour remains on paid leave from his duties as Charter Oak's principal. The Board will take no formal action tonight on his status. We have seen and heard the community's support for Mr. Wetterhour, and we want to be clear, paid leave is not a disciplinary action, and it does not imply guilt or wrongdoing, rather as a proper and appropriate operational action taken as a precaution to ensure that both our internal investigation and any external investigation is completed in a manner that is unbiased and fair to all parties, including Mr. Wetterhour. As Dr. Lathan stated in her most recent communication to Charter Oak parents, "We regret any confusion, concern, or discomfort this matter has caused for the Charter Oak schoolchildren and the community," and we know that has been significant. However, we believe it is a fair and necessary step to uphold the highest standards of educational quality and integrity for the benefit of our students, our schools, and our communities. Any family with questions on what this investigation might mean for their student may call our special education office at six-seven-two-six-seven-five-two, or email info@psd150.org. Now, when we have the public comment period, we would ask that you please come to the podium and give your name for the benefit of our minutes. The time limit for any one speaker is five minutes, and the time limit for any one topic is twenty minutes. No person less than eighteen years of age may address the Board unless accompanied by his or her parent, guardian, or teacher, except with the unanimous consent of the Board. Now, I know that we may end up with a number of people in addition to that twenty-minute time period. It does not look like we have a large number of cards here, so with the Board's approval, I will just go ahead and call all of those regardless of what they are speaking about, if you're okay with that.
That's good.
I think there are about ten cards here, so it's going to take about an hour, and we'll go through that. Are we all okay? Okay. Very good. With that, the first speaker is Polly Greenway.
My name is Polly Greenway, and as a special education teacher and a parent of children with disabilities, I conducted my own file review to make transparent to the public, to the community, exactly what the special education testing, along with the IEP process, entails. I went back through tubs of papers and IEPs, dating all the way back, especially pertaining to the years of two thousand ten, two thousand eleven. I did this to support the Charter Oak staff because they did follow the guidelines for ISAT. They did follow the guidelines for IDEA, set forth in two thousand four and approved two thousand five. All children with disabilities are included in all general, state, and district-wide assessment programs, including assessments described in the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of nineteen sixty-five, with appropriate accommodations and alternate assessments where necessary and as indicated in the respective IEPs. Accommodations are the aids and services that are put in effect to show that the child can perform where they need to perform. They don't all start the same, but through all the interventions that Charter Oak put into my children, they ended the same. When my son was in third grade, he had the following accommodations on assessments: frequent redirection, directions clarified, repeated, opportunity to ask questions, parts read aloud, extended time, small group setting to reduce distractions, movement breaks. He benefits from visual cues, shortened spelling list, it goes on and on. But in this time period in third grade, he did not have a one-on-one. At this time period in third grade, he was not on medication, and at this time period in third grade, they were still working to make up the difference, while I, at home, worked to keep him on level. My daughter, in the exact same grade, had help with writing. She met her standards in third grade for reading and math. She did not meet with writing, even with all of her accommodations, but they still continued to provide her the support under what was required in the IEP. Third grade Nicholas was below standards. And his scores looked like this. No cheating going on, no discrepancies, just his disability. In fourth grade, when all the supports and accommodations were made, this is what he looked like, not because there was cheating, not because there were discrepancies, but because he had his one-on-one support, because he was in full inclusion in fourth grade, because he was exposed to common court in the classroom and supported in the special education room. His fourth-grade accommodations... On assessments, Nick may need frequent redirection, directions repeated and clarified, the opportunity to ask questions, parts read aloud, extended time. On reading tests, Nick may read the test aloud to an adult to help maintain his attention span. He benefits from visual cues. He may need movement breaks or pressure for sensory input. He needs wall, chair push-ups, squeeze hands and legs, push arms and feet to the table, may use Theraband on his chair. He may print on assignments. He may not be graded on his cursive. Art and coloring with subject areas will not be graded. He also had a Neo Word Processing device to help him. We know there's inconsistencies, not because there was cheating going on. We know there are inconsistencies because they have disabilities. And in his two thousand six evaluation, along with his two thousand nine evaluation, conducted and in his file within the district, it talks about the fact that he is going to have inconsistencies. There are many impacting aspects upon these scores and numbers, per se do not accurately describe Nicholas's performances and abilities. That was in two thousand six. Two thousand nine, the same thing. These are his diagnostic reports from his STAR reading test. And on the STAR reading test information that comes home, it says that assessments are just a snapshot at what a child learns in the classroom. So I have piles and piles of assessments, from the district assessments that are put in place to do his three-year reevaluations, to ISATS, to STAR reading tests, to evaluations that we've had on the outside, they're all not the same. He's tested at a two-year-old level to a sixteen-year-old level. He's tested from eighty percent down to one percentile. You can't compare apples to oranges to bananas to grapes.
Thank you, ma'am. Could we please... Dan Dougal.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Tonight, you're going to hear from parents about John's character and about the kind of culture he's created at Charter Oak. You'll hear about how he inspires his staff and his faculty, and how he's created an environment where kids are inspired to achieve their best human potential despite whatever socioeconomic or other challenges the kids might face. One parent was told by a district employee that, quote, "Nothing has changed," end quote, "as a result of John's placement on leave and subsequent replacement by an interim principal." Now, many of you are business leaders. Would you characterize the sudden removal and key director of a highly profitable division and replacement by someone unknown to the customers, the employees, and the suppliers with the statement, "Nothing has changed"? Would your shareholders believe you? Of course not. Losing a highly effective leader puts the entire organization at risk. To be clear, we want this investigation to proceed quickly, with a full accounting of the facts, and with due process applied. But regardless of what the state finds in this investigation, reputations have been tarnished. Our kids, who have worked hard to learn, the parents and tireless faculty who have...who teach our kids the value of homework, and that the key to success is hard work, our beloved principal, and in fact, the entire District one fifty, their reputation has all been tarnished by this. People don't remember the result of a long investigation that proved no wrongdoing. What lingers is the perception of impropriety. As part of the Focus Forward CI Regional Economic Development Plan, the Peoria area aims to increase the population of twenty-five to forty-four-year-olds by five percent and increase jobs by thirteen...and create over thirteen thousand new jobs. Our schools are either an asset in that regional development plan or a liability. And as schools become a liability, homeowners flee the area, causing property values to plummet, and instead of economic growth, we end up with economic decline. Charter Oak School, under John Wetterhour's leadership, is a crowning jewel in the district, despite a long history of problems elsewhere. Many parents of Charter Oak students have told me that they specifically moved into the neighborhood so that their kids could go to school at Charter Oak. Dozens of students' parents sent their children to Charter Oak this year so that they could get a better education. And in fact, my wife and I... In fact, my wife and I chose our house largely based on where our yet-to-be-conceived son would someday go to school. We chose wisely. We made an excellent choice. We're part of the Charter Oak family now. But now, one member of our family has been taken from us. We'd remind you that, like everyone in these great United States, John Wetterhour is entitled to a presumption of innocence until proven otherwise. The parents and the PTC at Charter Oak implore you to restore Mr. Wetterhour to his family and to his office as principal at Charter Oak School. It's our position that reinstating Mr. Wetterhour to his position as principal will not impede either the creation of the fact-finding report, which must be submitted to the ISBE, or the state's investigation on the potential testing irregularities. And finally, as you evaluate your long-term plan for the district and seek to improve the performance across the entire district, you should take a look...a good, long, hard look at Charter Oak to see what makes it work so well, and use it as a model to be emulated. We have a great principal. We have engaged teachers. We have students who show up ready to learn. And you might have noticed, we have a pretty active and engaged PTC. Can you really afford...can you really afford to begin dismantling one of the best-performing schools you have? You cannot destroy your way to success. So in the days to come, and as this investigation continues, be sure to ask the hard questions and demand truthful answers based on facts and data before allowing yourselves or the administration to be swept up in a rush to judgment. Thank you for your time.
Chris Martin.
Good evening. My name is Chris Martin, and thank you for providing the opportunity for me to speak in front of you. The reason I'm here is no surprise, and I'll make my position clear. As a parent of Charter Oak students, I support and believe in Principal John Wetterhour. But to understand why I support Principal Wetterhour, you first have to understand what he brings to the Charter Oak community. What John brings is not just solid administration. He brings a culture of learning and excellence that isn't duplicated everywhere, and in fact, is what makes Charter Oak a success. Now, Charter Oak is full of things that you won't find everywhere. For example, not everywhere will you find a principal who knows every child by name and sends them home from school talking about things like... Like telling the truth, treating others with respect, and always doing what's right. You also won't find everywhere a group of parents, teachers, and students willing to come together at a moment's notice, on our own accord, I might add, for no reason other than to support our principal. And also, you won't find everywhere temporary classrooms in the back parking lot of a school erected solely because parents want the best possible education for their children, and they know they can find it at Charter Oak. Now, I understand. I understand that perceived variances in numerical data are likely driving the current review of testing procedures in Charter Oak, but I ask you to please understand that this raises questions. What prompted the investigations? Is this based on a consistent audit process that's applied across all Illinois districts and are all District one fifty schools undergoing the same review? Now, I would like...I would like, but don't expect, answers to these questions today.
Just a moment, please. If you would give the man a chance to make his points, and now you want to cheer, but would you just respect his chance, and if you want to say something about that at the end, let's do that, please. Could we do that? Thank you.
I would like, but don't expect, answers to those questions today, but as a parent, voter, and taxpayer, I do expect this. I do expect that you review John Wetterhour's record in a fair and unbiased manner, that you work as expeditiously as possible through this process to avoid undue delay, and that while I realize you can't discuss specific personnel issues, you foster a sense of transparency with parents, teachers, and the community regarding this process and the events that will decide Principal Wetterhour's status with District one fifty. And finally, I expect you to please understand that if Principal Wetterhour is not reinstated, we will demand a full accounting of the facts and use all resources at our disposal to hold administration and board members accountable if any improprieties come to light. Now, I am not an elected official, I'm not an educator, and I've never even held a position with a PTC, but what I am is a parent. I'm a parent who sees his children excel academically, socially, and morally, and while I would like to think that my wife and I have something to do with that, I also know that Charter Oak, under Principal John Wetterhour's leadership, supports and reinforces those qualities in our children that they need for success later in life. I don't envy the position you're in. Your decisions carry heavy consequences, and your actions are and will be scrutinized in the court of public opinion. So I'll say this: If you have already decided John's future, I hope and trust that decision was made with the purest of intentions after a factual review of his record as a District one fifty principal. And if his actions are still under review, I ask that you please consider these issues in front of you with not only open minds, but also open hearts. Because if you do, I am confident that you will find what the parents, teachers, and children of Charter Oak already know to be fact, and that is that John Wetterhour runs Charter Oak Primary with integrity and has never demonstrated any intent to willfully circumvent testing procedures in his twenty-four years as an educator, and that Charter Oak will continue to foster the values, reputation, and results that make it a source of pride for District one fifty as long as John Wetterhour is reinstated as principal. Thank you.
With that, we're at the point where we have to convene our tax levy hearing, and that takes place at seven PM, and I believe we're right there, just turned over, seven o'clock. Could I have a motion to convene the tax levy hearing, please? Madam Secretary.
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. That motion simply means we've opened the tax levy hearing. At this point, anyone who cares to comment about the tax levy, which is the tax rate we apply for the next taxing year, is welcome to speak. I would ask you, please, if you're going to speak about some other topic, if we have your card up here, we will get back to you in the same sequence in which they were received.
Hi, my name's Mimi McDonald. I reside at thirty-four twenty-six West Kiva Court, and I didn't really come to say anything about the tax levy. I actually filled out a card to speak later on. However, as a citizen, I'm not very happy with the way District one fifty spends any of my money, whether you raise a tax levy or you don't. Yes?
Yes. If you're addressing the issue of the tax levy, that's appropriate.
That is the issue of the tax levy. I'm telling you, I don't appreciate the way you spend the taxpayers' money. I sent four kids through District one fifty. I'm a grandparent in District one fifty, and I certainly feel I have the right to tell you, I think you spend our money poorly. The only really good performing school I ever hear about is this one, Charter Oak.
This is...if you're going to continue talking about Charter Oak, that's not part of the tax levy discussion. I apologize for that.
All the schools are part of the tax levy. Money goes to all the schools, and it goes for all the students. How can you tell me that?
The tax levy deals specifically with the rate of taxes. It does not deal with the spending of them or any other detail. That's all it deals with.
Okay, well, thank you. I'll talk to you later.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anyone else who cared to comment on the tax levy? Could I have a motion to close the tax levy hearing, please? Madam Secretary. Aye, thank you. The tax levy hearing is closed. We'll return to our public comments. Savino Sierra.
My name's Savino Sierra. I live at seventeen oh eight South Stanley on the deep south side. I have a complaint. You people didn't set up too good, you know? You'd say, "Respect this, respect that." You don't respect the senior citizens that are taxpayers, you know? When you people meet, you got a comfortable chair. You could at least have a folding chair for some of the people back here, not just the staff, but some of the people that have some problems of getting old. And that's one of the gripes I have with you people, and they're legitimate. I also want to say that you're spending too much on Central already. You know, you're buying properties, and you've got big ideas of using it for the athletic things at Central, at Old Grandma's, I call it. You shouldn't have closed Woodruff. They had all the res...most of the resources that any high school is needed, and lots of time Central comes over to use them. And actually, you should have had all of our high schools stay open. So I'm kind of ticked with that, too. Like the lady said, you're spending our money too wildly. You're going on trips and everything else. And if you read the newspapers, our education levels are a lot lower than a lot of foreign countries. I think we're about number twenty-three. So what's the answer there? I probably won't get one. We also need more security guards in our schools. We don't need that elite program like Mr. Cannon said. We don't need the security guards. We need elite. You know, that isn't the answer, you know, to our discipline that we're trying to initiate in our schools. We haven't got to that level yet, you know? The superintendent hasn't taken care of that. I must say, I support these parents that are here tonight to defend their principle and their ideas, you know? And like President Truman said, being the top dog, the buck stops with him. This may here in District one fifty, the buck stops with the superintendent, and she should go on...she should go on alternative leave with pay. Till we get this straightened out, you know? Somebody...if you're accusing the school and that of doing something, somebody's got to be guilty. But these parents are here to defend their principle and their principles and their children, and I don't blame them, you know what I mean? And so I just want you to know that I'm with these people here, and I hope you people reinstate that principle so they can keep going on, because like we said...
And it's permeated with Lee Winger being removed from the district grounds for life. You know, I can't even get the FOIA information. You know, over two months, I've been trying to get it, can't even get it. Recently, they had muffins for moms at Lindbergh, and our superintendent was there and identified herself to a parent, as a parent, and she was not there as the superintendent, had a conversation, didn't like the results of the conversation, obviously. The parent was getting ready to leave and brushed against her. The parent was on a walker. The parent was a handicapped person, and what happened? She had the parent removed by our security forces, and then a letter sent to her house banning her from the premises for a year, and she can't even go pick up her son. That's pathetic. You know, that's all I can say, it's pathetic. As far as Mr. Wetterhour is concerned, this started way before. This is not an issue of the test scores. He challenged, on many instances, our superintendent. You don't challenge the superintendent. The reading program at Charter Oak was challenged and asked to be watered down, and he refused. And you don't refuse anything that the superintendent wants, so we go on a witch hunt, and that's what this is. This is a witch hunt. You know, and it stems, you know, two great, as far as I'm concerned, special ed teachers are on the pan. I worked with one for 25 years, 30 years, probably the best special ed teacher in the district, and her integrity is being challenged? I can't get over it. You know, she doesn't even know, you know, the history of these teachers. She doesn't even know the history of the principal. She doesn't know the history of the kids, nor the history of that school out there. You know, she's been here three years, and all she does, basically, is kick people around, bend over and be kicked. Taxpayers need to rise up. How much money is the bodyguard that was given to the superintendent after the Mark Bills incident, is it costing the district? You know, that's ridiculous. I say this: If this is investigated, and somehow the school is exonerated, which I think it will be, the superintendent should absolutely, 7-0, be fired.
Sharon Cruz.
Tonight, I have given you side-by-side costs for the last five years for all textbook, technology, and program purchases. In three years, this administration spent over $6 million on books, mostly textbooks. Two and a half million was spent during the previous two years. A greater difference in spending shows up for computers, smart boards, iPads, et cetera. About $3 million was spent in 2008 and 2009, but this administration spent over $11 million. However, the district website does not provide the data for expenditures over $2,500 from 2008 and '09. A little over $2 million was spent on programs of one kind or another by the earlier administration. This administration spent almost $11 million in three years. A total of about $28 million was spent on textbooks, technology, and programs in the last year, three years. I can't help but ask, how much of those millions should have been spent on teaching positions to lower class sizes in almost all schools? Textbooks have been discussed from this platform and among teachers for three years. This administration bought $6 million worth of books without teacher input. Such unilateral micromanaging is extremely unacceptable leadership. I was shocked to learn that several of the very expensive new texts are consumable. See Exhibit A expenditures in purple. Perhaps that accounts for the textbook expenditures in the 2012-13 year. Most new texts were purchased for the 2011-12 year. Therefore, I was shocked to find that an additional amount of almost $600,000 was spent on folate texts in 2012-13. Another $200,000 went to Houghton-Mifflin, and yet another $860,000 to McGraw-Hill. That's close to $2 million spent on textbooks this year. So will you be spending $2 million per year on books already purchased? These textbook companies made out quite well with no bidding process and no teacher input. Apparently, there wasn't much board oversight either. Were you aware that so many texts are consumable? Computers and smart boards are valuable learning tools. I'm not going to question that expenditure too much, except to say that I hope that not too much of that technology found its way to Wisconsin Avenue and/or to the offices of employees where there is little benefit to students. The adage "haste makes waste" seems to apply in that you have spent a considerable amount of money in a very short time. The worst expenditure is the $10 million on programs. I looked up the names of all the companies on the internet to try to guess how this district can possibly put to use over 75 new programs purchased in three years and 35 programs that had been chosen by the previous administration. There are over 100 programs that I have listed according to cost. Programs bought in haste and by whim with no teacher input and no time to analyze the duplication. Just as curriculum guides are required for textbooks, guides should be written to show where all these programs fit into the classroom instruction. Has that been done? Also, note how expensive these programs are and that the cost of using these programs seems to go up every year. I know that Dr. Lathan will tell us that the $300,000 expenditure for Rosetta Stone is worth the money. Please do a study to find out how little this program is used, better yet, find a way to determine whether all these programs are producing results equal to their cost. I do want to say thank you for listening to our pleas for more transparency, as evidenced by the listing of all the purchases over $2,500 on the minutes of the last four meetings. Therefore, I learned that the last two months, $83,000 more has been spent on textbooks, $200,000 on technology, and $20,000 more on Rosetta Stone. Haste continues to make waste, and thank you for all of you.
Jeff Atkins-Dutrow.
Jeff Atkins-Dutrow, proud president of the Peoria Federation of Teachers. On behalf of our district's Unity Council, council made up of leaders of our district's unions, and on behalf of our council's fearless leader, Mrs. Mary Fran Westler, I'd like to thank the Charter Oak Union members, staff members, students, parents, and community members for the professionalism they've exhibited under very, very trying circumstances. We, the Unity Council, appreciate you. To the Board of Education, I must ask, are you catching on yet? To the administrators here tonight, look around at your colleagues, because you know darn well, one of you will be next. And my question is, what are you going to do about it? Sit still and stare at your feet until it's your turn? Before the last board meeting, I emailed each board member a packet of information regarding issues or problems with special education, counseling duties, book distribution, the induction mentor program, evaluations, PBIS, overtesting, the Machiavellian shuffling of principals, and the ever-present culture of fear of retribution. Not a single board member emailed me, called me, or attempted to meet with me regarding any of these concerns. As a reminder, the teachers in the district are your experts. What goes on in this district is supposed to go on to support the educational services we provide for the students and their families. Somehow, things have gotten turned around. And actually, Ms. Patel, I heard you, you did respond. You were the only one, I apologize. The turnout we have here tonight should serve as a reminder regarding who our schools belong to, the community. You're elected to work with the administration, and believe it or not, the unions, the teachers, and the community to push the agenda of the community. The problems in our district are the direct result of a breakdown in what is fundamental to a district's success, and that is collaboration. I'm here to let you know that we are here and we are ready. We're not going to be obsequious. We won't feign collaboration for show. As experts, as teachers, as a union, we will stand for what is right for our students and for our community. I suppose our real question to the Board of Education is, will you stand with us? Thank you.
Amy Bornstadt.
Good evening. My name is Amy Bornstadt, and I would like you to know that I wrote an amazing speech about Mr. Wetterhour, about his character, the culture he creates at Charter Oak, and I find it to be unnecessary right now, because Mr. Wetterhour, his culture and his character speaks for itself, that our community would rally instantly to speak out on his behalf, that with very little effort, an entire community came together to express to you our frustration. We would like to begin by saying that we support John Wetterhour, that we support the Charter Oak staff, that we support the children of Charter Oak, that we take offense to this allegation without any shred of evidence, without any submission of data, anything for us to analyze. We are frustrated that this man who spent 25 years building a reputation based on kindness, based on respect, based on being there and being ready, that he instilled that in our children, and he instilled it in us. So with kindness and respect, we have been patient in waiting for information that can back up these allegations. We have been kind, and we have been respectful while we wait for answers to our many questions. On the District 150 website, it says that you, the administration, your number-one responsible rule is that you respect your customer exclamation point, and we in the District of Charter Oak feel decidedly disrespected right now. We can't understand how removing Principal Wetterhour from the school is for the good of the school. We don't understand how his presence could impede an investigation where we assume this investigation would be district-wide. How does one principal's presence or lack of presence in his school interfere with the investigation while every other principal in the school, because I assume every other principal in the district is also being investigated, that the data for special education kids is being compared, their test scores versus their academic achievement? We assume this is district-wide. We assume that one school was not looked at. If one school, if you look at one school's special education sample, that's a very small sample, and if you don't look at the schools that those kids matriculate into, then that's an unfair sample. So again, I assume this is a district-wide investigation. So I would, we, as a community, wonder how one principal being removed from one school is fair. It's disrespectful to us, and it is disrespectful to the integrity that John Wetterhour spent 25 years building, not by words that he wrote on a website, but by his actions, by the trust that we have in him with our kids every day. We, the community of Charter Oak, also take offense to the school board saying that there's nothing that they can do. You are elected to be our representatives, to speak on our behalf and act on our behalf. With a little bit of research, I was able to find out, and I'm going to read it verbatim, it's on my phone, sorry, should have had it ready. The ISBE's policy is to leave sanctions for school or district staff involved in testing irregularities to the local district. So there's not anything in place at the ISBE level that specifically states that teachers' certifications can be revoked, that an entire school district could be shut down. That is not written in the research that we did. So you may make all the faces you would like at me.
Thank you very much. Susie Wolstenholm.
My name is Susie Wolstenholm, and I see Agenda Item Number 14 is the purchase of properties in the PHS area totaling $134,500 to be used for the expansion of outdoor athletic facilities at Peoria High. From this, I can only, I can only assume the sale of the stadium is still on the table. It would be beneficial to everyone if the actual plans were given to the public. Are you still trying to sell to Walmart? Are you working with the Park District? If you listen to the public, most do not want you to sell the stadium. However, I can only assume that is the plan as you continue to purchase land around Peoria High. Please state for the record what your plans are. I recommend a public meeting to discuss this. You can publicly state your plans and listen to people's concerns, not just here, but listen. You might also get some great ideas. I'm in favor of the stadium remaining. It is a wonderful facility. I have asked before, and I will ask again, how much money has been spent on attorney fees and settlement payouts since Dr. Lathan has been superintendent? Do we pay our, excuse me, do we pay our attorney mileage to travel from Chicago to Peoria for every board meeting? How much has been spent on moving costs to bring employees into our district? How many jobs have we given to the spouses as well? Do we still own property on Prospect that we can sell? I should not have to use the Freedom of Information Act to get this information, as it should be given willingly. A public statement should have been made regarding Charter Oak earlier. I understand you can't reveal personnel information. However, you should have explained this. You should have explained if this was standard procedure, or at least the process by which the decision was made. I believe public relations means relating to the public. Thank you for your time.
Mimi McDonald.
My name is Suzie Wolstenholm, and I see Agenda Item Number 14 is the purchase of properties in the PHS area totaling $134,500 to be used for the expansion of outdoor athletic facilities at Peoria High. From this, I can only, I can only assume the sale of the stadium is still on the table. It would be beneficial to everyone if the actual plans were given to the public. Are you still trying to sell to Walmart? Are you working with the Park District? If you listen to the public, most do not want you to sell the stadium. However, I can only assume that is the plan as you continue to purchase land around Peoria High. Please state for the record what your plans are. I recommend a public meeting to discuss this. You can publicly state your plans and listen to people's concerns, not just here, but listen. You might also get some great ideas. I am in favor of the stadium remaining. It is a wonderful facility. I have asked before, and I will ask again, how much money has been spent on attorney fees and settlement payouts since Dr. Lathan has been superintendent? Do we pay our, excuse me, do we pay our attorney mileage to travel from Chicago to Peoria for every board meeting? How much has been spent on moving costs to bring employees into our district? How many jobs have we given to the spouses as well? Do we still own property on Prospect that we can sell? I should not have to use the Freedom of Information Act to get this information as it should be given willingly. A public statement should have been made regarding Charter Oak earlier. I understand you can't reveal personnel information. However, you should have explained this. You should have explained if this was standard procedure, or at least the process by which the decision was made. I believe public relations means relating to the public. Thank you for your time.
My name is Mimi McDonald, and some of the board members know me. I, I'm sorry, there's, I don't know you, Mr. Floyd, but you're going to get to know me. Let me tell you how I'm known. I am known to the District 150 and Board of Education as the Special Education Mom. My child is legally blind and deaf. He graduated from Richwoods. I do process this district and won everything that I asked for for them not giving him an appropriate education. I do know a little bit about special education laws, probably more than you all do. And I also want you, my son, to know that my son went to the Helen Keller School for the Deaf/Blind in Port Washington, New York. Now, what brings me here today is the same old thing. I, I walked away from all this four years ago. I started getting calls, and I started watching and paying attention to what's going on. This, this year, trying to sell the stadium. And then I hear about all this with the Charter Oak parents. My stepdaughter goes to Charter Oak. I know teachers at Charter Oak. And then I hear about, is it Dr. Lathan rushing against the parent when she was on the school property as a parent herself, asserting her authority, and as a superintendent, we just switched capes there, decided to have this person removed from the school, the person who was in a walker, and told her that she couldn't come back to the school for over a year, banned her from the school. That's called discrimination. Now, you all don't, those of you who don't know me, you can blow me off all you want. I'm well-known in this town. And I think if you talk to people, they would tell you I wouldn't really blow her off. Okay? I am going to get behind this parent, Dr. Lathan, because I feel you have discriminated against her. If you want to call her up and change the rules, that would be a good thing. I am going to go out of my way for the board to let them know, I do not want you buying Peoria Stadium, and I'll do whatever these parents need for me to do to support them. And you know what I said about the money? You've got a principal who you put on leave that you're paying. That's my money. That's our money. It's not your money. And, you know, you haven't given anybody any proof of anything. I pray to God you better have something on this man because if you don't, oh my gosh, you are in such big trouble. So I think you should, I think you should think about all this and, you know, you can blow it off. That's okay. Go ahead and blow it off. Other people blow me off. But you will see me again. I'll be back. I, I was welcomed back by more security guards. It just reminded me of old times. And I'm just so happy to be back, and thank you for letting me speak. Thank you for letting me come to the meeting. I've enjoyed every minute of it. You have a good evening.
Thank you. Dr. Lathan, would you care to respond?
Thank you for coming out tonight, but no additional comments at this time. I think we can go back to your original statements before the public comments.
Okay. Thank you. That's enough of that. You know exactly what I mean. Remarkable Rule Number One, Respect Our Customers. Dr. Kenny. Just, some of the questions that were asked from the podium will be answered in this presentation.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Apparently, we have problems with the streaming video from the broadcast, so that is something that's being worked on, I assume. Is it being worked on? Okay, thank you.
All right. I'll go ahead and get started. This is just an update on the facilities.
Dr. Kenny, do you want to wait a moment while folks sort of move along? A lot of people are going to be leaving. Thank you.
Sure. First of all, as we talk about this update, I do appreciate the number of meetings our athletic directors and principals have had to talk about this along with Rabonda Johnson, the IO. They are here, so they certainly can answer any questions as we look at this and discuss it, and as we talk about it. So, first of all, I just wanted to talk a little bit about, again, the football schedule for next fall. We do have a few points to maybe extend the discussion from previously, and then we'll look at some of the facility options that we have, again, with a little bit more clarity than last time, that we can talk about, and then we can talk about the options. So, this is the schedule for next fall, and all I did was took what we had last time and then just threw out some options. As you look at it, there are 18 dates where our three high schools and Notre Dame have home games next fall. So if we were to try to play all of those at Notre Dame, that would be 18 varsity games. And with the schools that we play next year, there would also be 18 preliminary games. And I might mention that when we talked, when we talked last time about this schedule, we were looking at joining with schools to the west of us, and since that last meeting, that is not occurring. And we, in fact, will be going east and a little bit south. We're going to be going to the Big 12 Conference. So the idea of a varsity game and preliminary game on the same night down the road when we join this new conference, that will no longer be the case. The freshman and sophomore games will be played at different times, so that actually gives us a little bit more flexibility. But as you look at this schedule, you can see, and I tried to put the weeks in there because sometimes it's easier to look at it by weeks. When you look at each week, the top line is just something that we would schedule at, potentially at Richwood Stadium. And then the next line, in every case, is a conflict, so we have to make alternative arrangements. So as we look at, for example, Week One, Richwoods will play Notre Dame at Richwoods. Manuel will play Rock Island. Well, they can't obviously do it the same night, so we have to find an alternative time. What we thought might be able to be done for Manuel, we'd like to look at a couple of the games and actually take them to their home football field that already exists. If we were going to do that, we know that we'd have to make some changes. So, and again, the three in yellow, I didn't offer an alternative suggestion yet. As everybody's aware, Peoria Notre Dame is building their own football field, but it's our understanding that's likely not going to be ready next fall. So those three games in yellow, we would need to either play at Richwoods or find an alternative site. So I just wanted to list those again for you. Now, there is some flexibility. You could take Week Five, for example, and Manuel plays Richwoods that Friday night. Notre Dame would play Galesburg. If it's going to be done at Richwoods, it'd have to be done the next day. Or we could actually have Manuel and Richwoods play on Saturday afternoon, and Notre Dame could play Friday night. So there's some flexibility, but certainly one of the things that we do want to do is work with this group of schools that we play next year, and some of them probably part of the following year before we get into that Big 12 Conference. Am I still on? Yes. So, now, what happens with this? Well, actually, if all games are played at Richwoods, for example, with a couple of exceptions, Richwoods would actually, the field would hold 16 varsity games, the way we've got it set. We would put two at Manuel if we prepped the facility. But you look at the individual schools, Richwoods actually play seven out of their nine games at Richwoods. Even though technically Peoria High and Manuel are supposed to be the home teams, it would still be at Richwoods if we used exclusively Richwood Stadium. They would go on the road Weeks Two and Four. Manuel would play at Richwoods four times and at Manuel twice if we follow this suggested schedule, or could play six games at Richwoods, depending on how we write it. Peoria High would play at Richwoods five times, and Notre Dame would play at Richwoods six times. So that's a lot of playing in the, in the same stadium. One of our concerns would be, this current year, Peoria High and Richwoods and Notre Dame, all three made the playoffs. Now, it's not likely that they would have to all play at home the same weekend, but it's not out of the realm of possibility. So that, that could be an issue for us, so.
Let, let me just frame this a little bit. At the last meeting, Ms. Wolfmeyer asked for some options in terms of what we might do with facilities.
Right.
So, what you're talking about here is a schedule on the assumption of what?
That we did not use the stadium. Has nothing to do with selling the stadium, but, but if we did not, if we chose not to play at the stadium.
So the schedule you just showed on the earlier page and this one are what we would do to address our football schedule if the stadium is not used?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
What does the estimate cost on the stadium?
Well, we, probably in the football season, probably around $40,000 or so for all the mowing, the chemicals, and all of those kinds of things that we do, and people house there, so.
That's not what was asked. No, bring it up.
Oh, I'm sorry. We showed that at the last presentation, and somewhere between a million and two million, depending on what we wanted to do with it, to bring it back up to where it ought to be. There, there are issues with the stadium, so, yes, I'm sorry. Missed the point. Guys, help out if you want. Okay, so if we look at Manuel, there, there are a range of costs to addressing any of these three fields. We would like to put bleachers on the Griswold side. They would be home bleachers. It would make sense so that you can walk underneath them for them to be the I-beam construction. And again, a few months ago, when we did this last presentation, we went through different pictures of how the bleachers are built and so forth, so this isn't anything new, I don't think. Bleachers on the home side, angle iron, they're a little cheaper to build, probably, we had said about $150 a seat, so 600 bleachers would be $90,000 plus concrete pads, so right at about $100,000 there. We'd want to put some different fencing along Griswold, maybe even some solid fencing. And one of the things I would suggest if we're going to do this at Manuel, and I've got a couple of pictures to show, but I think we need to look at for backup fields. Right now, Manuel really has one football field. And if we, as we move forward and play more games there, it would be a good idea to have some backup fields ready to go. We'd obviously like to do some grading and sidewalk concessions eventually, but not necessarily immediately. At some point, we'd like to be able to expand the bleacher space at Manuel on the home side. We'd like to get it up to 1,200, and then eventually consider lights. So, and obviously, somewhere down the road, look at even, you know, if we wanted to turf that field. One of the things that we are working on, in fact, we're going to be sitting in on a webinar Wednesday, is we do want to look at getting some grant money for Manuel. We think we might be eligible for an NFL grant. The grant supplies $50,000 towards bleachers, lights, and those kinds of things, and up to $200,000 for astroturf. But there are a lot of limited, or limitations and criteria that we're going to have to justify, but it's certainly something that we're going to look hard at and go after. It's probably hard to see this picture, but these, there's the Manuel home field. It's the typical oval track, and looking at that, we'd like to put the bleachers on both sides of that. You can see the baseball and tennis courts and so forth. This next picture, it's a little harder to tell, but one area to look at to create a second field, practice field, is down where those yellow buses are. We're not using that area, so we would like to look at possibly redoing that area and putting in a grass field where practice could be conducted. It's really important, if you're going to play a lot of games, if you have a bad, muddy weekend or a couple in a row, to practice and play consistently on the exact same field is going to have a lot of wear on that particular sod. I did suggest Treewind as a second possibility. Treewind has a huge open field behind the building, and currently, JFL is using that field. What we'd like to do is just dress it up some so that it's more level, avoid some injuries. JFL would still continue to use it, and we would maybe use it for some practices for Manuel, but only as a backup. It's about six blocks from Manuel High School. So I, I think it would just, it would help the program altogether, but I, I think this is probably a good idea to at least try to address that field some. Someday, maybe we'll have some baseball and softball there too for their middle school program. Okay, Richwoods, one of the ideas that I was asked to look at is the idea of artificial turf for Richwoods. If you're going to have a field that survives that kind of use and play, then this is something that, that we need to consider. Notre, I'm sorry, well, Notre Dame's looking at it too for their new field, but Dunlap has it, El Paso Gridley has it right now, and other schools are looking at, at the idea of turf too. What you have here are prices from ATG Sports out of St. Louis area. They actually gave me, they came and looked and gave some estimates. And their price for inside that oval track, since there's a curb already there, would be about $683,000 to put in the turf. If you're going to do a centerfield logo, which is pretty common with the turf, keep in mind, turf is really just a huge fancy carpet, so they would actually sew in different carpeting to give you a logo. In-zone letters, you can see some of the different costs they've given us. New goalposts, those are a little higher than another, the slide I showed about Manuel. Manuel, by the way, has pipes. We'd like to take those field goalposts out and move them to Treewind to be able to be used there. So we'd like to put new National Federation posts. It was $10,000. This is $12,500 because they're going to do the labor. Track resurfacing, now, that's really not part of the cost of football, but it's something we need to look at. Their track is, is due for resurfacing at all eight lanes. This price listed here, $97,200. When he came to look at the track, it was covered with snow. So I think it might be a little on the low side when they start looking. has it, El Paso Gridley has it right now, and other schools are looking at the idea of turf too. What you have here are prices from ATG Sports out of St. Louis area. They actually gave me, they came and looked and gave some estimates. And their price for inside that oval track, since there's a curb already there, would be about six hundred and eighty-three thousand to put in the turf. If you're going to do a centerfield logo, which is pretty common with the turf, keep in mind, turf is really just a huge fancy carpet, so they would actually sew in different carpeting to give you a logo. In-zone letters, you can see some of the different costs they've given us. New goalposts, those are a little higher than another, the slide I showed about Manuel. Manuel, by the way, has pipes. We'd like to take those field goalposts out and move them to Treewind to be able to be used there. So we'd like to put new National Federation posts. It was ten thousand, this is twelve and a half thousand because they're going to do the labor. Track resurfacing, now that's really not part of the cost of football, but it's something we need to look at. Their track is due for resurfacing at all eight lanes. This price listed here, ninety-seven thousand two hundred. When he came to look at the track, it was covered with snow. So I think it might be a little on the low side when they start looking at it and if they have to pull up parts of it and repair blacktop underneath it or the pad underneath it, obviously the costs will go up a little bit. And Candle Sports Lighting, that's what this company uses. When I showed information a couple of months ago about this same information, I showed FieldTurf as a brand name, cost very similar, so this is no different. I also have talked with Jason from Turf Solutions here in Peoria, and he's agreed with these numbers as well. So that's three different companies, all in the same range of prices. Now, one of the things I'd like to point out, that as we look at this kind of a price or this idea to do Richwood's or Manuel, since it's inside the oval track, is about the same kind of a cost, whichever school we would do it at, or eventually if we decided to do it more. And I'm not going into the advantages of turf, you know, the long-term is, they're much more maintenance-free, much less cost year-to-year, safer on the bones of the athletes and so forth. One of the things that we would want to do at Richwood's, if we're going to turf the field, is move the scoreboard. It has wiring running to it, and if anything ever went bad, you don't want that underneath the turf, so we would move the scoreboard right outside the track. So those are some of the kinds of decisions we'd want to make. As we were meeting out there, it was very good information, meeting with some of the parents and with Mr. Hershey, talking about some of the other things they'd like to do. They have a good soccer field, really good, but it's time to address some grading on it. And one of the things that they do have is the northwest corner, or northeast? Northeast corner, probably a small retaining wall so that we can level that corner of the field out. It just, you know, as we're looking, we just wanted to look at some other things. One of the things they'd like to do is have a wrestling area in their gym, so currently in their second gym at one end, it's very open into the weightlifting area. In fact, I've got some pictures. So we'd like to close that end of the gym off and put a second floor in wrestling. It would be very, very similar to what we have now at Peoria High. So, again, that's a bit of a wish list, so if you go back and look at just the football part, obviously a lot less. All right, Manuel, these are similar numbers as we showed last time. One of the things that Manuel has a bit of an issue with is with just a single football field, it's a little bit like Manuel. Unfortunately, there really aren't a lot of options to create other fields for football, for second fields. So, I put a little higher price because it doesn't have the curb that we'd want to deal with, we'd have to put that in. And one option or one good thing about Manuel, I'm sorry, Peoria High, is if we decided to turf that, we could turf it just a little bit bigger to make it a more competitive, also soccer. So that's something that we can look at. Lighting, that's the standard must-go price that I've had other times. Scoreboard bleachers, we'd like to put probably about twenty-eight hundred to three thousand seats in at Peoria High. Okay, there's a picture of the Peoria High, the football field, and with regard, and I'll just go ahead and bring it up now, one of the things about Peoria High that's unlike any other high school, probably in central Illinois, our kids leave that campus because there is no softball field, there is no soccer field. The baseball field is in dramatic need of totally redoing. The track is a square track, so it's hard to run regulation meets on a square track. In fact, you really can't do that. And, baseball, softball, soccer, oh, tennis courts need to be renovated. So we're looking into doing some of that. We've talked about buying four properties for tonight. Those four properties have nothing to do with football. We have bought other properties before. When we feel like we're getting a decent deal, we would like to be able to expand other outdoor sports, again, such as soccer, such as the softball, and bring them back to campus. We talked about this last time, and I'm sure Mr. Dumphy can reiterate what happens with all of those kids when they go to practice, because they have to hustle down, get on a bus, take a bus, go to a different field, have their practice, come back, and it's a considerable problem with their time, whereas the sports do get to stay at home and have home crowds and so forth are much better for the kids. So when we talk about those four properties tonight, that's what that is about, okay? All right, now, these are a little bit stripped down from what I showed you earlier, and I can go back if you want, but I think Manuel, we would really look, need to look at a minimum of about seven hundred thousand, up to a little over a million, depending on what we want to do, whether we want to have lights, how many bleachers we want to put in to start with if we're going to play football there. Richwood's bottom line, the seven hundred and fifty thousand is the turf, the moving the scoreboard and the, some of the infield things that are done for track. We really need to do those at a minimum. And I did, one of the things, again, as we looked at the different facilities and went back, one of the things, if you have been to Richwood's, no matter where you sit in their concrete stadium, lights are in the way. So, we've talked about it, it would be nice to move the lights to behind the stadium, and then on the other side of the field, if you look, the lights there are on top of wooden telephone poles that are not in very good shape. So sometime, we need to talk about the lights, and that's why I did put it on an earlier budget. Plus the fact that those lights are very, very, very inefficient, so that is something we'd like to address as well. And again, Peoria High, if you don't go with the lights and do just the turf and, you know, a reasonable amount of bleachers, that's the kind of a cost we're looking at. One of the things that these guys talked about, that I think is pretty important, is if we're going to have a decent schedule and we're going to be good hosts to a new conference, we really would like to have two fields with lights at a minimum. So, we thought that was important to point out. And again, the number of games, to try to play thirty-six games on Friday nights or whatever, or Saturday afternoons or Saturday nights, is a lot at Richwood's if we're not going to turf it. So, one of our thoughts is, let's go ahead and use the stadium next year, give us more time to come up with the funding for any of these that we choose to do, and I think that's basically it, and we want to open it for discussions.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Kenny. Any questions? Ms. Wolfmeyer.
Well, I just want to say, the whole subject has come up because a year or so ago, when we found out that it's going to, we're going to have to put, one way or another, we're going to have to spend some money, either at the stadium or at the schools, and the thought came up, actually, the thought came from the individual schools, about looking into putting the money into the individual schools. And I thought, a couple of months ago, when the athletic directors and the principals presented to us, they did a great job of explaining what it would mean to their schools and to the students to have home football fields. One of the things I do want to say that is, I think, at least in my discussions with administration, and I think with some of the other board members, we're not necessarily talking about doing the football at Peoria High right now. That's a possibility, is that we could put that one off, because we are able to do the softball, the soccer, and the baseball, and I just wanted to say, that's because there are some leftover funds from PBC that can only be used at Peoria High.
Right.
And that's what we're looking at, and so we, the thought was that possibly we could do that at Peoria High, look at the football in the future, and then look at football, updating at Richwood's and setting something up at Manuel. So I think really the question in the next couple of months that we need to decide as a board is, do we want to put the money into the stadium, or do we want to put it into the individual schools and just not use the stadium? Nothing to do with selling it or anything else, wait and see what would come forward then, that we could do with the stadium, whether it's in concert with the Peoria Park District or whatever, and keep that a green space. I think we heard the community say that, and we'd like to see that happen also. So, I don't know if any of the athletic directors want to speak again tonight, just briefly, or anything. I thought you guys did a great job the last time you spoke at telling us. I think especially, Mr. Hershey, you gave us an idea of what it meant at Richwood's for those guys to have their home football field, and what a feeling that is, that it would be nice to have at the other schools. The other thing I like about the, or the baseball, soccer, and everything at Peoria High is, the kids will have their own, their own facilities at the school again. We aren't going to be busing for practices, busing for home games, and so I think that's an important thing to do. So I had asked for this, I just wanted sort of an update, there's a little bit different information, I want to keep it at the forefront so that we can stay on this and hopefully by winter or early spring, make a decision on where we're going to go with this.
One thing I'd like to kind of point out too, these guys are, and ladies, very, very excited about this new conference. As we were looking at the last meeting, you know, a couple of months ago when we presented, going west was a football-only. So what they're looking for now is all-sport conference. And it's not just sports, there's academics and cheerleading competitions and Scholastic Bowl and all of those kinds of things, so they're very excited.
Is that pretty much a definite?
It's what we'd like to do, so. Guys are welcome to comment.
Yes, if anyone would care to offer an opinion or a thought, we'd be, we're welcome to hear from you. Sure. Mr. Darlin, would you like to use the microphone? Please.
Am I hooked, am I on? Yes. Not to speak for the athletic directors and the principals, but what was mentioned at the board meeting when we presented, we still feel strongly about that. It would be great to have the facilities or the games at the high schools. You know, if I'm Manuel or Peoria High, do I want to go to Richwood's and be the home school when I play Richwood's? And there's something about playing in your backyard, there's something about your community coming to your games at your building. The question, the concern we had in regards to next year and possibly playing games at Manuel was, would it be ready? Would the facilities be ready? Would it be nice if we played the games at Manuel? And we were a little concerned that if the funds aren't there, and if the stadium wouldn't be available, we're not sure that Manuel would be ready to host games down at Manuel.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Brian, I'm sorry. They're going to speak now.
Just a quick rundown of the Big Twelve. That would be Normal Community, Normal West, Bloomington High School, Champaign Central, Champaign Centennial, Urbana, and Danville. As opposed to the Western Big Six, if you throw Quincy out, which of course is, you can't get there from here, the distance to the new conference schools is pretty similar to the Western Big Six. Then when you put Quincy in the mix, you've got a lot more travel, a lot more complications. And it is all across-the-board sports, so we're excited about getting started, schedules, tentative schedules, and getting going with them. They've been ultimately unbelievably cooperative. Then, one quick comment about Peoria High School. The additions that have been mentioned tonight are just going to get us equal to what all the other schools have, so it sounds like an awful lot, but adding softball, baseball, soccer, having our kids walk out to practice is going to make a tremendous difference in academics and athletics.
Thank you, thank you.
Also, I wanted to just bring up the fact with football, next year, if we needed to at Manuel, we could play maybe the Rock Island game and maybe another game down the line on a Saturday afternoon. So we could try to move that to a Saturday afternoon if we only had maybe the bleachers set up and facility set up for that, and set that up like that. Just wanted to bring that up. Also, one more thing I wanted to bring up. Another thing that, we're talking about football, football, but another thing that Manuel will be able to be used for is for track and other things. So we could host the conference track meet, which we, whenever Manuel has hosted the conference in the past, we either had to go to Richwood's or to Peoria Stadium. So in the future, we would also be able to go and just host things at Manuel. I know this spring, we're hosting the conference track meet for the boys.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, these are possibilities, and we have to take a little more to look at it, and there's some decisions to be made here, but not right this minute. Okay, very good. Thank you, Dr. Kenny. Also, purchase orders over twenty-five hundred dollars. Any questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none. Number four, individual differences, Dr. Lathan.
Since our last board meeting report on November twelfth, two thousand thirteen, we received thirteen new Freedom of Information Act requests. Of these new requests, nine were filled. There were six pending requests noted on the November twelfth, two thousand thirteen board report. Those were filled. We received one hundred twenty-two requests for this calendar year.
Thank you. We've come to the consent agenda. Do I have a volunteer to read the consent agenda? Mr. Crawford.
Thank you, President Floyd.
Yeah, you can get right on top of it. There you go.
The items on tonight's consent agenda consist of, number one, gifts to the school district this meeting, three thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. For a year-to-date total of seventy-two thousand seven hundred and two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Proposed action, the following donations be accepted and letters of appreciation sent to the donors. Two hundred fifty dollars, twenty, two hundred fifty dollars by John and Sue Ensley to Heinz to be used for student-staff incentives. Art drying racks valued at two sixty-nine ninety-eight by Teresa Erickson to Charter Oak School. Easy stand valued at two thousand three hundred dollars by Amber Simpson to Thomas Jefferson. Seventy-five dollars by Dixie Zeitlow to Washington Gifted. Three hundred fifty dollars by Jim Gusterson to Keller Primary School to be used towards the purchase of classroom computers. Donations totaling five thousand were made to Peoria Pope Schools Foundations, James and Catherine Owens, Griffin and Sally Cloyde, CGN and Associates, Southside Bank. Again, letters of gratitude will be sent to the donors for these kind donations. Two is payment of bills. Three is human resources report, proposed action, appointment, employment compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of an employee. I have number four, payment for travel. I have number five, board travel requests. Proposed action, the Board of Education approve the following expenditures for board member travel. Linda Butler, Lynn Kosick, Martha Ross, and Debbie Wolfmeyer to attend the National School Bar, School Board Conference, April fifth, two thousand fourteen, through April seventh, two thousand fourteen, at a total cost of nine thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty cents. Six, sale of Keller East. Proposed action, the school known as Keller East, PIN numbers fourteen dash sixteen dash one twenty-nine dash zero four one four, and four dash sixteen dash one seven seven dash zero zero one be declared no longer necessary or suitable for school purposes and the administration be directed to offer the property for public auction and an auction sale to the highest bidder. I have number seven, intergovernmental agreement. Proposed action, the Board of Education approve the resolution, reforming and ratifying the execution of an intergovernmental agreement and sale of property known as Washington School. I have number eight, contract for lease of Guardian Angel with Catholic Charities of the Diocese of Peoria. That the administration be authorized to enter into an agreement with Catholic Charities Diocese of Peoria to extend the lease for Guardian Angel until December fourth, two thousand fourteen. The anticipated expenditure request for authorization will not exceed eleven thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars for lease of the property in expense of cleaning the rented space. This expenditure is funded through the education fund. I have number nine, temporary approval and payment of bills. Proposed action, that during the period between December sixteenth, two thousand thirteen, and the next regular board meeting, the interim comptroller treasurer is given full authority to approve and pay any amounts due and owing by the school district, which in his judgment is the best, is in the best interest of the school district, and require payment prior to the next regular board, regular school board meeting. I have number ten, Elliott Counseling Services proposal. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve the attached proposal with Elliott Consulting Services to provide mental health and substance abuse services to youth families in District one fifty, to youth slash families in District one fifty, per board policy, seven colon, seven colon one ninety AP. The cost of these services from January one, two thousand fourteen, through May thirty-first, two thousand fourteen, will be twenty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Bradley University contract. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve a two-year contract with Bradley to host the annual back-to-school staff event on Thursday, August fourteenth, two thousand fourteen, and Thursday, August fifteenth, two thousand fourteen, fifteen. Fifteen, oh, two-year, okay. August 15th, 2014, as well as high school graduation events, Saturday, May 30th, 2014, and Saturday, May 21st, 2016, at Renaissance Coliseum at a combined cost of $12,000, $3,000 each event, plus combined operational costs for all four events estimated at $22,400. Twelve, 2014, 2015, and 2015, 2016, school calendars for Valeska Hinton, ECEC. Proposed action, that the Board of Education adopt the attached 2014, 2015, 2015, 2016 schools, school calendars for Valeska Hinton Early Childhood Education Center. Item number 13, 2014, 15, and 2015, 16, school calendars. Proposed action, the Board of Education adopt the attached 2014, 15, 2015, 16, school calendars. Item number 14, purchase of properties in the PHS area. Proposed action, the Board of Education is asked to approve the purchase of the following properties. 1811 North Ellis, PIN number 18-04-101-024, at a cost of $35,000. 1813 North Ellis, PIN number 18-04-101-034, at a cost of $25,000. 416 West Nebraska, PIN number 18-04-103-007, at a cost of $35,000. And 1801 North North Street, PIN number 18-04-103-028, at a cost of $39,500. Item 15, tax levy certificate. Proposed action, the Board of Education authorize the administration for the tax levy certificate to the county clerk's office as presented. Item number 16, recommendation, the Board of Education certifies that all assurances and information provided in each Rising Star Continuous Improvement Plan are true and correct. Proposed action, that the Board of Education certifies that all assurances and information provided in each Rising Star Continuous Improvement Plan are true and correct for the following schools. Charter Oak, Franklin, Glen Oak, Harrison, Heinz, Jamison, Keller, Northmore, Thomas Jefferson, Treewind, Valeska Hinton, Woodier, Woodrow Wilson, Roosevelt, California, Calvin Coolidge, Lindberg, Markbells, Royan Acres, Sterling, Von Steuben, Washington Gifted, Manuel, Richwoods, Peoria High, and Woodrow Career and Technical Center. Mr. President, that concludes the items on tonight's consent agenda.
Thank you for that substantial amount of reading. On item number 11, the date as shown on the agenda for the graduation events should be corrected to read Saturday, May 30th, 2015. That's a type of graphical error, and I assume we can take that as amended? Is that acceptable to do that, as long as it's written that way or read that way? Okay, so that, please note that's amended. Okay, thank you, Mr. Crawford. Could I have a motion for the approval? Well, first of all, is there any item that any board member would like to remove for a separate vote?
Not for now.
Okay, Ms. Patel asked for number five. And Ms. Kostick? Number 10, would you like to remove that or just to talk about it? Okay, we'll address that here. So we're taking item number five, which is the board travel requests, and we'll deal with that separately, and then we'll address Ms. Kostick's question about number 10. So could I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda with the exception of item number five?
Second.
Thank you. Let's start with discussion. Ms. Kostick had a question about number 10.
On item number 10, is this a new, also a new, because previously we had another company?
The Fayette Companies will no longer provide the obeying services, and therefore we needed to contract with another agency. This agency will be picking up where the Fayette Companies left off. The same employee will continue to provide services to our students. And so that's why the contract runs through May 2014.
Any other questions? I'm not missing anybody here. Let's just get a little more discussion here. Dr. Kinney, on number six, the sale of Keller East, could you just speak briefly about
Yeah, what we will do is we will have a series of legal notices that put it for an auction, and I think what we would like to do is look at a price of $350,000 as a minimum bid. We have that right to determine a minimum bid. We have a right to be very careful about purchasers because this is across from the existing Keller Central School. So we'll put some of those kinds of information in the auction process, but, you know, by your approving this, we'll move forward with that process. We do have somebody that is interested, but certainly we do want to have an auction.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? Then I have a couple others here. Dr. Lathan, number eight, the contract with Guardian Angel, could you just provide a little more detail on what that represents?
Yes, we provide two classrooms, and we have actually two District 150 teachers, actually at Guardian Angel, that provide services to students. And so this is just an annual contract that we need to renew our lease contract. The fees change slightly because there's now a cleaning service that's for cleaning those classrooms. So every year annually, you need to approve the lease agreement with Guardian Angel.
Thank you. Also, could you just give us a brief background on items number 12 and 13, the school calendars, and how those are developed?
Yes, the school calendar committee, which is made up of representatives from all of our collective bargaining groups and also district administrators, work together to create a two-year calendar. That was one of the conversations that we had in previous years as opposed to presenting to the board a one-year calendar. It gives an opportunity, or provides parents an opportunity to plan and staff to plan and know their schedules two years in advance. And so with items 12 and 13, we went ahead and also presented item number 11 to you for your approval tonight also.
Thank you.
And item 11 includes the all-staff meeting that's held every August, and then also our three high school graduations that are held in May at the Renaissance Coliseum located on Bradley's campus.
Thank you. And I believe we've done the two-year calendar. This is the second time we've done that?
Yes. Yes, but this is the second time around.
All right. I would just, if there are no other questions or comments, I would just offer an observation about the school calendar, and I know this is probably not the highest priority, but I took a look at the calendar, and of all the weeks our schools are in class during the year, only 59% of them are five-day weeks. The rest range from two and a half to four and a half days. And if you talk about continuity of education and the opportunity to have a classroom that is consistent throughout the week, something on the order of a substantial portion of the time, 41% of the time, it's less than five days in that week. So I don't know if that's good or bad, but it just seems to me that there's an issue there, particularly as it relates to when we finish school at the end of the year and the possibility of doing that earlier if we change the calendar. So I'm just raising that as a question. Ms. Wolfmeyer?
You knew I was going to comment on this if you-
I knew that, but I thought I'd bring it up anyway.
You have to remember that a lot of the days that we're off during the week are state and federal holidays, and we have no control over those. And personally, I, as a person who is not out in the classroom, the calendar committee is made up of those people who work in the classrooms with the students every day, and I think that's why we entrust to them to come up with our calendar. I mean, they have the option of wanting to start earlier or later and get out earlier or later, or not taking as long a spring break or a Christmas break, and I think they found a way that it really works. It certainly doesn't mean that we, as board members, can't make suggestions to the calendar committee to consider, but the bottom line is, whatever the calendar is, we have to go a certain number of days. And I think the calendar committee does a good job of determining what's best for the, especially the students, the staff, but especially the students. But a lot of those days, we have no control over. A lot of the four-day weeks, we have no control over because they're either negotiated in the contracts, or they are federal or state holidays.
I understand it. Still good to have the discussion. Okay. Any other questions, comments on any of these other items on the consent agenda, minus item number five? Ms. Bastian, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Patel?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Floyd?
Aye, thank you. Item number five, and I'll go back to that, that is board travel requests. Could we have a motion on that, please?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
You know, I just disapprove of you young folks gallivanting around the world. I don't mind paying for board development in state, but I've got thrilled about these faraway ones. That's all.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments? I'm sorry. I didn't remember about her.
I do. In regards to those of us attending the National School Board Association, we know that as members of the Illinois State School Board Association, we are encouraged to not only go to our state conferences, but our national one as well, so that we can look at things that are happening in our state, but as education reform is a national issue, it's good to be able to go and sit and listen, learn, and give input to other school board members across the country, and that's the betterment for the country.
And I also appreciate that all of you who are going to the national did not go to the state to save us money, so I do appreciate that, and I don't.
Thank you. Mr. Crawford?
And I would just second up about the thoughts and add that I learned quite a bit when I go to the state school board conference, so I think a trip to the national school board conference is likewise well worth while. It helps keep school board members energized. We are indeed a bridge between the community and the district itself, so I fully expect that school board members, this will be a trip where they take quite a bit, so I will support it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Madam Secretary?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. We now come to the deliberation agenda, review of suspensions.
Thank you. Proposed action is that the review of suspensions listed on the report dated December 16th, 2013, be approved as presented.
Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Abstain.
Ms. Patel?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Floyd?
Aye, thank you.
Item 18, revocation of board probation. The proposed action is that the revocation of board probation listed on the report dated December 16th, 2013, be approved as presented.
Madam Secretary?
Mrs. Wolf-
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Five of ayes, two abstain, motion carried.
Number 19 is expulsions. The proposed action is that the expulsions listed on the report dated December 16th, 2013, be approved as amended.
Second.
Madam Secretary?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Abstain.
Mrs. Patel?
Abstain.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Five of ayes, two abstain, motion carried.
Thank you. Students expelled by the board are referred to by number, thereby ensuring privacy. Board action concerning the students has been decided in executive session. That completes our deliberation agenda. The final three items are the presentation and suggestion by board members. Mr. Crawford?
In the new year, I have a suggestion for committing the whole topic. I think I would like to have a discussion on a summary of field trips that our primary and middle school and high schoolers take. What is on the wish list, what has fallen off in recent years? Just in talking to some of my colleagues, it seems like the landscape of field trips, and trips for that matter, have decreased over the years. I'd like to get the, I'd like to know what we have and how we can get those back online.
Anyone else?
I think that's a good idea. I just chaperoned my very first field trip last week, and then I had to sleep for 16 hours, because, good lord.
But you survived.
I did. But the highlight was the bus, because my son is four.
Well, you get the courage medal for that. Any other presentations or suggestions by board members?
I would just comment that a lot of that extensive spending on technology, two years ago, I think a lot of that was American reinvest, it was the stimulus, the ARRA Act.
American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, I believe?
Yes.
Some, not all?
Yes, not all. But there, a bunch of that came through that, and they were technology-designated funds.
Yeah. I would also add that we're playing catch-up on technology, we're not on the bleeding edge here. Anyone else's comments on that? Okay, reports from board committees, and also, Mr. Crawford, do you want to comment about the state conference, or do you want to defer that to another time?
I think we'll defer to the next meeting.
Okay. I know. I'm going to add my observation for another reason, though, but anyone else have any presentation suggestions?
Are we doing word of committee report?
Not quite. We're sort of getting the tail end of this. Okay, well, I was going to do my report, and I'll keep it brief, but one of the things that I went to was a session that was an alternative school in the Quad Cities, and they run a calendar that is four equal-term periods, and they have a break of three weeks between each of their class periods, and they use two of those three weeks as what they call intercessionary periods, and those are used for makeup or improvement of student performance for those who are falling behind. And I think that's a model that is very interesting. They've had very good success with it, and this is a school for students who are not behavioral issues, they are just struggling to focus and do their work in a traditional academic high school setting, and it seems to be working very well. That said, we have a couple of facilities in the district that could probably go to the same type of calendar that Valeska Hinton uses, and I think at some point, we have a number of things we have to deal with, but it would be good for the administration to at least look at, I think, what would it take for us to pilot that type of a calendar in a few schools, one or two, to see how that would be approached. I know there would be some issues there in terms of MOUs and other things, but I think there'd be some substantial benefits in parts of our district where that might be used. So when the time comes, perhaps later this spring, we could address that, Dr. Lathan.
Is what you're speaking about year-round, year-round school very similar to what we do with Valeska?
It would be a very similar schedule to Valeska. And I know some other school districts have tried that. I know Dunlap looked at it and decided not to do it, but I think they were considering it for their entire district. This is, what would it take for us to think about doing this, and what would be the implications of it?
Only in an alternative setting?
No, not as an alternative setting. Just a regular school, but it would give us the opportunity with that type of a schedule for the intercessionary-type sessions for students who need help. Does that make sense, Ms. Ross?
Point to please be commented is, there might be a report out there somewhere already, because it may be a little, oh, but we've been talking about this for a number of years now. Not necessarily piloting two schools, but looking at year-round type schools. Number of years now. So there should be something written already on what it would take to do that.
Well, and I'm assuming that that could be brought back. Let's look at that again.
Look at what's already out there.
We don't necessarily have to reinvent it, but we need to think about it.
Done a lot of late work on it already.
Right. Okay. Okay, we're at the point of reports from board committees. Ms. Patel?
Parent-teacher advisory committee, sorry. We had a very good meeting this past week, and as you may recall, we are discussing personal digital devices in the schools, not just cell phones, but tablets and laptops and all the kinds of things kids bring to school. Even Goldman Sachs this past week finally went to bring your own device for employees, so we think that will trickle down to the schools sooner rather than later, and we're trying to get out in front of it instead of chasing behind it. So we will be deploying, probably in January, a survey to the community, to students, teachers, community members. Talk- trying to get out in front of it instead of chasing behind it. So we will be deploying, probably in January, a survey to the community, to students, teachers, community members, talking about how they currently use digital devices and what limitations and uses they feel are appropriate, so we can get a baseline of community and parent feeling on those issues as we start to think about what we want to see the district look like in five years technologically.
Thank you. There, there was a session in Chicago on that, and I attended it, and it really didn't have the type of content of what you're describing, so it was a very different...I was hoping it was gonna address what you were looking for, and it really didn't, so I apologize for that.
We are hoping to have, Havana's school district has a really innovative bring-your-own-device policy, and we're hoping to have their superintendent come speak to the parent-teacher advisory committee about how they went about implementing that and how it works for them. And we're also looking at Kennelworth has a policy, and just some other policies around the state to see, so that we don't reinvent the wheel and we can see what already works and what doesn't in other places.
Any, thank you. Any other reports from board committees? There being none?
Merry Christmas.
I'm sorry.
Merry Christmas.
And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and I believe we can call for an adjournment. Thank you.
2014.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
Thank you.
Jay, you might. Somebody's so beautiful. Huh?